Not too bad for a month. Alright, it's time to call the meeting. Your order, if you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Uh, and prayer, the pledge of first prayer. Dear gracious heavenly father, we thank for this day and all the many blessings, Lord. We thank you once again for giving us an opportunity as a community uh, to come together and uh, we pray that every decision we make will be accordance to thy will, thy word. Uh, Lord, we pray for our country and especially the men and women that serve our country and the ones that's on Ford's soil that you will put thy hand around them, bring them back home safe and sound, be thy will. Uh, Lord, we pray uh, for the families that have lost loved ones. Uh, comfort them as only you know how. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and in the presence of me, we pray. Amen. Uh, okay, Ray, if you'll leave some pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Bill?
Here.
Alderman Dale?
Present.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Present.
Alderman Elmer?
Here.
Alderman Langford?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Here.
All present need a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
All right, motion.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Linder. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second uh, by Alderman Rex Dell. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, outside motion pass. Additions or deletions to the agenda? I have uh, one addition. Uh, I'd like to add a part-time employee, Mr. Ray Evans uh, to the agenda. He'll be item number eight. And also, uh, we have uh, took care of number six. Uh, so we'll be deleting, removing uh, number six from the agenda, please.
Motion approved. No additions, no deletions.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second uh, by Alderman Bill Linder. Any discussion?
What do we do with it, number six?
We remove it from the agenda. Remove it from the agenda. It's been resolved.
Good job, man.
We have motion second, Vice Mayor. Second by Bill Linder. Any discussion? No more discussion. All for the motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, outside motion pass. Don't have any old business. Uh, we'll go to new business. Uh, out of number one downtown revitalization, uh, Mr. Gene Gann.
I've given y'all a uh, sheet paper with an update from Mr. Evans on some of our projects. Um, as you'll see, the very first one there, the T I sidewalk project. Um, we've got approval for the plans of the construction and we've got, the consultant is submitting several pre-bid documents. The estimated cost did increase by a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and we expected this to be bid in January, but uh, I have another update from Mr. Evans today that tells us that there are uh, some necessary permits from the city that have to be obtained for permanent and um, temporary. So that was one update to that. He says I'm pushing the bidding back to May or June of twenty twenty-three. And on there, there is a misprint that should be, uh, contract completion date is May twenty twenty-three, not twenty thirteen. We would have missed it. For the uh, Tap courthouse project, the environment thing is complete. Uh, consultant started on construction documents, so that's well underway. The A R C grant on South Church, uh, U C D D is in the process of collecting required environmental responses from various agencies. And we plan to schedule a public meeting uh, the third week of November. I think we set that, or can we set that for the fifteenth, most likely? Uh, involving all the folks down on Business Owners down on South Church Street to discuss with the end of the project. The dog park, um, since we're still attempting to get a check ceremony scheduled, uh, the consultant submitted a very reasonable design fee proposal. Uh, and we'll recommend approval after we have the signed agreement from the Boyd Foundation. The uh, tap grant for a seeder in Little Street, application been submitted, waiting order from T dot uh, on that, so that's one for sidewalk drainage and ADA compatibility. Any questions about that?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I've got a few. So will the uh, we don't hear of it getting the permit business. Will our engineers uh, that are taking care of the uh, this grant, will they be getting the permits and does the city, will they be getting permits on behalf of the city or is that something that I need to look into?
I'm not sure. As all he said was, before we were cleared by T dot to bid the project, the city will need to acquire necessary temporary construction easements, permanent access easement.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if he's getting those or...
Yeah, probably, we're a good, uh, we could, me and you and Ray can sit down and work it out. I mean, it's no problem to get it. I just that's the first I heard of it. And normally, our engineers take care of the permits.
Right, and it may be, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So we will get them cleared for that.
Okay, thank you. And also, uh, uh, you said, uh, there's going to be a meeting with South Church, uh, business owners and property owners. Is there a date set on that?
I think we said the fifteenth, but we've got to firm that up with everybody if you're available.
Okay.
Shannon, if you're available.
I think we were gonna schedule that after our merchants meeting on the fifteenth, so it would be like five o'clock and then that meeting at six.
Right.
So it's not confirmed yet, then, right?
Uh, we haven't sent anything out yet, but
No.
Okay, alright.
It's confirmed in our tickets anyway.
That's all the questions I've got. Anybody have any questions?
Where's a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollar increase? Where does that come from?
Comes out of the D R C, downtown revitalization committee. If you remember, uh, our cell stacks revenue was up uh, about thirty-five percent. So all, all the money, all the improvements that is on our downtown square comes out of the funds uh, from the enhancement grant. One hundred percent of it comes out of the fund.
Some money from taxpayers.
That's right. It's gonna come out of the funds.
I mean, it is, but it didn't.
Yeah, that's right.
Taxpayers spend, so we ain't gonna owe them taxes nor bill them taxes.
That's right.
Uh, none of his business. We had two vacancies on the committee. Uh, one was Mr. Evans, of course, he stepped down. Uh, the other was Bruce Hudson's. So we have uh, discussed a few additions to that. Uh, we were interested in putting Mr. April Stover on the committee, as well as Mr. Larry Phillips.
And, and these folks have businesses in the downtown zone?
Yes, one on Church Street, one on uh, Westport Square.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we need to have a motion to officially put him on.
I'll make that move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson to add Mr. April Stover on the uh, D R C and Mr. Larry Phillips. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Alderman David Langford. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, outside motion pass. Continue on, Ken.
Alright, uh, next item is, uh, okay, I've noticed the Christmas lights around the tops of the buildings uh, have aged considerably. We've had those up for quite a few years. Uh, in trying to get some replacement bulbs, it ended up that we couldn't get replacement bulbs sufficiently to, to fix those, so uh, our thought was to go ahead and get new light, lightings for Endland Square. Uh, that would be in the range, we got some bids would be in a range of about sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, including some new spare bulbs when we buy, when we buy, we said at the same time, we'll get a spare bulb for future. Uh, that's an investment that'll last for several years. Um, I can't remember the last time we changed those lights, but it's been many years ago. Uh, so what we propose is to set an amount not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars for that project from the D R C fund.
Yeah, and to go on just a little bit further, uh, we have replaced some of the bulbs uh, on top of the buildings and, of course, those bulbs, which are LED now, are not matching uh, the existing uh, bulbs. Obviously, LEDs are brighter, they look different, and I think some persons think that it just doesn't look very good at all, so uh, to echo kind of what Mr. Gann said, that we felt this was the right way to correct the measure. Uh, I've had you doubt of all the measurements around the courthouse, uh, well, around the uh, around downtown, all of the buildings, all the existing buildings, and so the quotes that we've got, it ranges about sixty-five hundred dollars, so I think Mr. Gann is asking the city council to approve us, uh, to purchase up to sixty-five hundred dollars worth of lights to go on top of the buildings and downtown buildings. Is that a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Alderman Rex Dell, second by Vice Mayor Dotson. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, outside motion pass. Any other business, Mr. Gann?
No other business. I mean, I shall have some questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gann? Alright, Ms. Cantor?
Sir. I want to take a minute just to give y'all some updates on the events we have prepared for the holidays. Uh, this is always a, a great time of the year for the community because there are so many things going on, so our dates for Christmas in the country this year are December, sorry, let's go back a month, November twenty-fifth, December second, and December ninth. Will be from five to eight each of those nights. Um, so the first night of Christmas in the country, we'll do it generally like we always do. We'll have our tree lighting at six, Santa will roll in just before. Uh, Santa will be on the square. Then on December second, we will have a carousel there, and then on December ninth, there'll be a couple other carnival rides as well. So we have lots of different things prepared for Christmas in the country on each of the three nights of the year. So be watching our website, the newspaper, our social media, for an official schedule of events for each of those nights. Christmas parade sign-ups started today at the Chamber. Uh, the date for the Christmas parade is December tenth, and it will be at one P M. And just for future reference, our Christmas parade is always the second Saturday in December at one P M. Deadline for signing up is December eighth at five P M. So if you want to register, it's five dollars per entry. Call me at the Chamber, send me an email, let me know what you're looking to do as far as what your entry will be. Best way to do it is just to come to the Chamber and take care of everything, so we can go ahead and get you signed paperwork and give you your number on the spot. And lastly, we will be doing ice skating at the park again, and this will be on December sixteenth, December seventeenth, and eighteenth. This will be from one P M to nine P M at Central Park. In case of inclement weather, that will be moved to the community center. We will be showing Christmas movies and have Christmas um, music during this event. And I think the city will be providing popcorn. Will y'all be doing that again this year? You're not throwing that out there, did you, can I ask?
Chief Dow will be happy to do it.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. So we have plenty of things to keep everybody busy through the holiday season, so we have asked that everybody come out and enjoy all holiday festivities with their families.
Any questions for Ms. Cantor? No questions. You did a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gann. Item number two is the M T A S assessment report. I think everyone is uh, very familiar with uh, the city of Livingston was in search of a police chief. The assessment center uh, that we turned over to the University of Tennessee Municipal Technical Advisory Service, Mr. Rex Barton, uh, the police management consultant, and Mr. Warren Nemat, uh, which is our municipal management consultant as well. Uh, the city of Livingston agreed to work with University of Tennessee Municipal Technical Advisory Service to conduct an assessment center for the police chief position in the city police department. The scope of work included conducted job analysis, define job requirements, and development of valid selection, measurements, and training of assessors in the used unselection instruments. Using a critical incident protocol on job requirements developed by the M T A S assessment team, selection instruments for uh, instruments were developed and used in the assessment center. The goal was to develop, exercise, and simulate the skill uh, requirements of the job. There are several different instruments that could have been used to measure the competency of the individual job. These range from pen and pencil test to group interviews to simulations, the assessment team charted the most important competency and the measurement tools uh, that best evaluate this. The instruments developed and used in the assessment team were uh, behavior-based structured interview, role play, in-basket exercise. The type of uh, going up to the behavior-based structured interview, the type of structured interview, ask candidates to describe things that have done, uh, they have done in work situations which show the degree to which they meet specific job requirements for the position of police chief. A rating, uh, eight rating form was developed, the results of interview was discussed, consensus, uh, consensus reached on each for role play. The scenario of candidates on the first day of the new chief of police has informed that one of the department's officer had been arrested in the neighborhoods uh, county, and the scenario contains background information about the officers, some of which would be an open record under the Tennessee open records law, and some which would be confidential. The candidates were instructed to give a brief presentation and answer questions from the media. A facilitator played a part of the reporter and asked questions from a script of ensure uniformly. In-basket exercise, in-basket contains emails and notes of telephone calls, and an executive can find in a in-basket. These items are varying levels of importance, the candidate is required uh, to prioritize the items and describe the action usually would take to address the items. In the executive summary, three candidates participated in the assessment center of the candidates, and their respective uh, numbers were candidate number one, Mark Gavins, candidate two, Ray Smith, candidate three, Levi Mobley. The candidates for the police chief position was sent through an assessment center process on October twenty-first, of course, twenty twenty-two. The candidates was rated by a team of assessors on a scale of one to four. Uh, one does not meet requirements, two partially meets requirements, three fully meets requirements, four exceeds requirements. The assessors was uh, Mr. Dell, Armor Chief of Police, Allgood Police Department, uh, Mr. Randy Phillips, Chief of Police, Dunlap Police Department, and Ms. Lee Crockett, Human Resource Director, City of Crossville. A summary of the candidates' final rankings by competency and activity as follows. Candidate ratings across all competency, uh, Ray Smith scored the highest of fifteen point three three, uh, Mark Gavins with thirteen point three three, Levi Mobley with six point five oh. So uh, Mr. Ray Smith came out and, and uh, with his ability, uh, conceptional ability, scoring three point oh oh. Uh, motivation to achieve three point oh oh, work habits three point oh oh, uh, interpersonal skills three point three three, management skills three point oh oh. To give him the high score of fifteen point three three. You all got a copy of the assessment in your packets? We turned this over to M T A S, uh, they don't, uh, now, M T A S, uh, will, and they could not be here tonight because they're doing another assessment. Uh, but uh, they don't make recommendations, uh, but we did turn this over to them. Uh, and uh, the highest scorer is Mr. Ray Smith. I'll entertain a motion if you would, y'all.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think I want to make the motion for Ray because if we was enough to ask him step in after the chief resigned, and then he was asked again, I think Ray, Ray's the man winning.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Linder to honor Ray Smith as the police chief. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Alderman David Langford. Any discussion?
I'm glad we did this assessment this way. I'm glad we had some objective uh, outside analysis and went through what sounds like a very structured and a difficult process, and I think uh, the tree rose to the top and uh, we're gonna have great.
Got motion and second, all for any more discussion? We'll call Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Dale?
Normal.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
Alderman Langford?
Yes.
Alderman Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion passed. You now believe Ray Smith will be the uh, uh, police chief of the square and manager as soon as this meeting. Item number three, Habitat for Humanity Rock the Block, Ms. Allison Smith. Come on, Ms. Smith.
Congratulations. This is um, actually my first time speaking to a city council, so thank you all for having me this evening. Um, my name is Allison Smith, and I am the new director of development for Habitat for Humanity. Uh, I am that for the Upper Cumberland Habitat for Humanity, and we actually encompass Overton County. Um, we have just moved into an office up here in Overton County in the W L I V uh, building across from Pickett's Furniture, so we do have a space up here in Livingston, and we are tickled to be up here. With that being said, this Saturday, November the twelfth, we are having our annual Rock the Block event. Um, it is something that we have done in the past, so some of you may be familiar with it and some may not, but uh, what we do is every year, we try to get back to some of our smaller communities um, to bring beautification to the area. So we select several homes, and we ask several of our volunteers that are affiliated with Habitat to come out and help us uh, clean gutters, trim shrubs, uh, mow yards, rake leaves, for anybody that is in need. Um, so my time here tonight is basically to ask you if there is anybody in the community who um, has a yard that maybe they're too old um, to keep up, or uh, COVID, or monetary issues are a problem. We will have close to a hundred volunteers Saturday morning that are willing and able, um, and much younger than myself uh, to help us clean and mow um, certain yards in the community. We pick about uh, ten houses to go out to for four hours uh, this Saturday morning, and we provide breakfast and lunch for the volunteers that come out, as well as uh, t-shirts and waters. So if you know anybody that is in need, I will leave these brochures up at the front table. Um, and by all means, you can email me, you can text me, you can call the office. Let us know a name, an address, and a phone number, so that we can contact them and just make sure that they are willing and able for us to come out. We will be on ladders. We have them sign waivers if they are volunteers for us. They will not be going into anybody's home. We will just be out in the yard helping anybody that is in need. So if you know of anybody, we would love to have them, and um, thank you all for having Upper Cumberland Habitat for Humanity here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Allison Smith. Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I've got one now. On Saturday morning, meeting at your new location at W L I V?
We are actually gonna meet in Central Park, um, just for parking purposes, and everybody knows where it is. Um, we will have our director of construction there with a couple of trailers, and all of the rakes and blowers and tremmers, that gloves, safety glasses, and safety vests that they need, we'll hand those out, and then we'll give them actual addresses as to where they need to go. And we'll have a team type captain scenario that one. Thank you.
Uh, if you get in a area of, maybe perhaps uh, Friday, uh, me and you and Ray can sit down and see. If we've got the neighborhoods identified at that time, uh, I don't know if there will be a traffic concern or not, Ray, but uh, I'd like for us to sit down Friday. We don't care if it's
I'll be there.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Item number four is the School Resource Officer Contract. Uh, Andre, uh, Mr. Andre is here, which is our city attorney, and we have met, uh, with, uh, or we have took this contract, uh, and, uh, have went over it with, uh, going back and forth with, uh, Dr. Donnie Holman, uh, Director of Schools, Overton County, and uh, you wanna give us just a cliff notes of what this is?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, this is the School Resource Officer, uh, interlocal agreement. I requested to see the previous agreement, uh, before I said whether or not it was okay to sign this one. The main change and thing between the previous agreement and this one is that it gives the school principal a lot more authority and, uh, say over what happens in the school. We discussed that, um, chief didn't have any objection to that. I think they, uh, had some objections on the campus side, uh, but that wasn't a problem for, uh, for us, and we talked about that. There were two small changes that we had. The first one was to add a sentence on the second page here, so paragraph B-one. Just to clarify that in the event there was an emergency out in the community, the police chief had the authority and the discretion to call the SRO outside of the school to address that emergency. And the second one was in the sub-paragraph B-three where it talks about SRO using school installed door check recording software. It was our understanding that that wasn't installed in all of the schools yet, and so we just said, when available with SRO, we'll use that. Those are the only two changes that we had, that, uh, if anybody had any questions about the rest of the career, I'd be glad to address those.
Chief Smith, you had an opportunity to review this as well, and you have any issue with this?
No, sir. I totally agree with, uh, the representative of the city.
Okay. I, I looked at it as well, Dr. Donnie Holman looked at it, and they're all, we're all in agreement, uh, on this, uh, contract, uh, agreement with the over candidate of Education, uh, and Livingston Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program. Is there any questions for the officers? Should we have those schools? Come on up, Chief.
Uh, we actually will have four when all the hiring process is done. We have two, we have a candidate that we haven't hired yet, we can go into the hiring process, but we have, uh, one at age Roberts that will also be over at the Reach Academy to work both places. Uh, we have one at LMS, and then we have two at the high school, and that's our goal is when it's all said and done, so totally four altogether when it's all hired out. They're very important positions. The, the ones that we do hire, we, we try to put folks in there that would coincide with the school, work good with the school, and be a, a great help to that school, because it's, the thing is resource, we're a resource for that school to use and whatever it be. And we did talk to the principals and all, but Mr. Uh, Dr. Donnie Holman is very good, I've worked with him for years. I ain't had a principal yet, step over bounds, they ask. We, we're in this thing together, we're just not a big ideal youth process in this. We're all in it together to keep children safe and educated.
Thank you, Ray. So any questions for Chief Smith?
I don't have one for Chief, but I have one for Andre. Is the financing the same as the previous contract?
It actually changes a little bit. Now they're doing half on, uh, four meter, I don't wanna speak out of turn, yes.
What was it before, do you remember?
Oh, we, we carried two and they done half on two, yes.
Chief, if you will, go ahead and sign that, and we, it's, this is the contract, go ahead, yeah, police.
Do you need?
And I'll see if you can do that to, you took the after the meeting.
So to clarify, they're paying for four, the contract actually said for SRO, for two SROs, charge the pay for two or four?
Half on two or four.
The contract says it's four.
Okay. So we'll pay for two of those, no pressure, that's right.
I'm gonna see if you can push that button down. Yeah, thank you. All right, is there any, uh, questions about anymore?
Yeah, we're paying for two, they're paying for half of two.
That's right.
We're just perfect, number three.
That's four. Yeah, I've just got, you know, you're making that.
He said two at high school, one at, uh, middle school, Reach Academy, one at age.
Yeah, they're splitting time at age Roberts and Reach.
Gotcha.
So there's, there's a total of four. Okay, is there a motion to accept this SRO? Motion made by Alderman Bill Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Alderman Dale, any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Officer Linder.
Goddamn, yes.
Officer Langford.
Yes.
Officer Allen.
Yes.
Assistant Ossie.
Yes.
Officer Dale.
Yes.
Officer Clough.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven, uh, the charter changes, uh, read, excuse me, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Item number five, I did that at the time. Thank you, Ken, keep me in check here. Item number five, Police Department update, Mr. Ray Smith.
Well, first of all, I would thank you gentlemen and represent. There we go. Morning, thank you gentlemen for the opportunity. I've gotta take this job lightly, I'm not doing my twenty-five years serving the City of Livingston lightly, I look every day for the betterment for our department. And apart from department, we have made some good choices and, and moving on, and it's some big shoes to be, I don't take that lightly, those that's before me, have mighty high standards, and I wanna try to grow on those and set even higher standard for our department to always shine for the City of Livingston. Our goal is to be a servant to the community for safety and any other matters that we need to be. Kind of introduce you to some guys we have hired up, we're gonna report, is Josh Smith, he's right here, right behind me, Wood Sandwoman. He's in our, uh, investigations, he does narcotics, he's also certified, got several years under his belt in working that and major goal that we're looking for. Second is Jesse Gorta, he is an uncertified officer, uh, he will leave for school, uh, in January and become a full-time officer with the Livingston City Police Department. Britt Scherfield is another gentleman we've hired up here locally, comes from the, one of the greatest countries and hardest chapel where it's not, Luke, Luke's room. And, uh, well, I can have to put that in there, you know, we can, so he is, uh, he's gonna go also in January to school, he's uncertified. Calphine also is hard in this SRO, uh, dual purpose and patrol too at this time, to get her training in there. She is, uh, she's out of an hospital, no tears, makes her home here in Oldham County, Livingston City, man, but, and she's been working at age Roberts. And then Shane Marlowe, Shane Marlowe's hired in, he's a certified officer also, he works at the hospital, night shift there, they keep the hospital safe and sound and take care of any needs that comes in there also. And then Mr. Joel Bell, him, last month at least, he's out of, uh, Rogers County, he works night shift here in Livingston City, and he's the guy that rounds around the night and make sure everybody's good. He is certified, he's a great gentleman. I believe we have paid some fine, fine people to work for the Livingston City Police Department, we set high standards of, interview process was just as, seemed like as strict as one night went through, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that and introduce the city to some folks. Uh, our goal is in the evidence room, uh, we should be done and completely finished, we've set standards up, we've got just a few other little things to come through and make sure that we are doing dual checks, with checks and balances to make sure everything is correct. By the first of the year, we have ensured we will be done. First year finishes off, we, we've got everything lined up, everything's straight. Uh, Sergeant Chris Mace, uh, I haven't done it, Sergeant Mace has sat there and did all the hard work, uh, with the other department officers and doing all these checks and balances, he's gave his time, his self, and he's, he's worked hard in there. It's, it's changing, we'll have to manage to change off that in TAST in their direction to end that situation. We'll be completely finished by the first of the year. We'll be completely out of that and start up, start from scratch, and we'll keep on going and hammering out any kind of needs we've got. Uh, we did have a second sale, uh, in, uh, some assets that we had to get rid of. We do, I do know that I got a report back from the folks about our patrol cars that we got on the grant, they're a transport. And that transport's on the train, it's bound to Nashville, is all they can tell when it's on display, so we have seven brand new units, Dodge Chargers coming in to help us do our job and patrol the City of Livingston. We sold some assets to buy equipment to do so, and those assets brought up fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars that we'll use and equip, uh, those cars. I and Mayor have met multiple times about our grant, be moving forward, I'm sure there's more meetings that take place into that to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do, uh, upon, uh, the purchasing and the purchasing of the equipment for the cars at this time.
Thank you, Ray. Any questions for Chief Smith?
Thank you.
Yes, very much. Chief Allen, if you'll come up and introduce your crew, we'll go ahead and, you may have a fire, man.
Oh, we've hired, uh, Clay McDonal, he comes, uh, he's been with us about a year, uh, he's been on the county department for three years, we've hired him. Our Miss Megan Sales, uh, she comes to us, she's been with the county department about five years, certified EMD, uh, working under certified certification. And Dirk Van Veen, he's been a volunteer with us for, man, around fifteen years, he's been certified for about seven, eight years now, so he's certified far higher, ready to go.
All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, what these are, uh, some are replacements, and then some is the two new ones that we budgeted in, uh, for this fiscal year. Rocky, what does actually be you total in your department now?
That, uh, three of them, two shifts, and leave two, another two shifts plus one as well, six. We have eleven.
Caught you off guard, didn't you?
Yeah. Three of them, two shifts, two of them, two shifts.
All right. Thank you. If you can push that button down, Rocky, I appreciate it.
I'd like to say that, uh, I'd like to thank these men and gentlemen for coming, taking their time coming up here tonight, because that way we kinda know who you folks are when we see, uh, you're on the street, you know who we are and everything, and that way, you know, I, I think it works better because I've seen people that I didn't know who was or who is driving a CDB, well, they don't know who I am or anything, and I mean, uh, you know, it just works better if everybody knows one another, and I appreciate you folks.
Thank you. Ray, I think, uh, gentlemen, to write Ken Dodson must arm wrestle.
I've known duck cat for a long time, you burn on monkeys, huh?
Sorry, Ken. All right, uh, now we go to item number seven. Uh, this is the charter changes. Uh, we had a board session, uh, uh, earlier, and we just talked about a few things that we'd like to see changed and, and possibly more coming at a later date. Uh, but, uh, the, the election date changing to the first Tuesday of the month of June and then the, uh, term, uh, starting July first. Uh, and also the alderman pay, we changed that where aldermen could be, uh, paid, uh, and, uh, of course, all of this, uh, I have a resolution here, uh, that says the town election was incorporated under, uh, on thirty, under the Private Acts of nineteen twenty-three, and the town election desires to change this election date to coincide with the regular whip date established for our state and national elections, and the town election desires to adjust the date upon which newly elected aldermen take office, and the town election desire shall allow those who serve as alderman to be compensated for their services, uh, to the town, and how therefore be resolved by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen of the town Livingston, uh, that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen request Senator Paul Bailey and Representative General Mark Williams sponsor legislation, uh, before the General Assembly that makes the following, uh, provisions. The only, uh, Andre, I, I think they moved, uh, Senator Paul Bailey out of our district.
Okay, we can, uh, I've checked the Tennessee General Assembly website, but it may not be up there.
It is, uh, the gentleman, um, fellow of, uh, Roman County, former county executive over there, Ken, uh, anyway, I'll give his name to it. He lives all the way in Roman County.
Okay.
For some reason, he's our state senator, and we'll do a good job, I'm sure. It didn't make a whole lot of sense, we got one that was part of it, in the, but anyway, but anyway, we, we'll check that. But that is a resolution, uh, if you wanna speak to this, uh,
Sure.
Any of that if you need to.
With respect to the, um, election day change from the first Wednesday to the first Tuesday that will take effect next election, June twenty-twenty-four. Now, uh, with respect to the length of term of office, this won't impact anybody currently sitting on the council, uh, it will be staggered, so beginning, uh, those elected in twenty-twenty-four, they will serve, uh, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight, and then those elected in twenty-twenty-six, uh, will, uh, serve through June thirtieth, twenty-third. Um, so nobody sitting on the council currently will have their term shortened the way we've written this. Um, and finally, we discussed a couple of ways to change the provision, um, that discusses whether aldermen can be compensated. We, in this resolution, have provided that, we're just going to delete the sentence that says aldermen shall receive no compensation for their services as such, rather than taking out the word no. So this, uh, just specifies that either you can provide for compensation or you can choose not to. Any questions?
Any questions for our attorney, Mr. Andre Redd?
I got one. So if we take that out, would we need an ordinance to say what, uh, aldermen can be compensated? Uh, yes.
I've got a question. What's advantage over starting their term July first, does that inform?
So, uh, David, if you remember, currently, right now, uh, the election is the first Wednesday of June, but that person doesn't take office until September, and it's just a long time, uh, for someone to wait to have to take office. For example, Bruce was elected and nearly didn't get to take office three months after the fact. Uh, so this is simply, uh, once you're elected, you'll take office in the next three weeks.
What's the advantage?
Well, you don't, you're not waiting three months to take office, you're taking, you're waiting three weeks versus three months, approximately. That's the amount. That's the amount. So, uh, any other questions for Mr. Andre? If not, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman John Cluff. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Officer Langford.
Yes.
Officer Allen.
Yes.
Assistant Ossie.
Yes.
Officer Dale.
Yes.
Officer Clough.
Yes.
Officer Mander.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, so we assign this, uh, resolution, and, uh, you're gonna just send this to you and you'll take it from there?
As amended.
Yeah, one as amended, yeah.
Okay, so we'll take it from there.
Okay. Thank you, Andre. Uh, item number eight that was added to the agenda, Ray Evans, it is, if you recall, we, uh, discussed that, uh, we would be paying, uh, District Ray Evans twenty-four thousand dollars out of the downtown revitalization, uh, funds, uh, to help us with capital projects in our downtown Livingston area, uh, and, uh, we, uh, discussed it and, uh, think it would be better, uh, just as to, for, to hire Ray as a part-time employee, uh, at the same rate, funds coming out of the same place, uh, and, uh, he would be under the umbrella of the City of Livingston, that's true as well.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Linder. Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Assistant Ossie.
Yes.
Officer Dale.
Yes.
Officer Clough.
Yes.
Officer Mander.
Yes.
Officer Langford.
No.
Officer Allen.
Five, yes, one no, the, uh, motion passes, uh, the Ray Evans will be a part-time employee being paid out of the Downtown Revitalization Committee not to exceed over twenty-four thousand dollars. Any public comments, anyone want to address the council? Karen Dunn, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Linder, all four motions are the same. I, all opposed, let's sign, or adjourn.